This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Appropriations and Judication will reconvene, having recessed till six o'clock. Notice of the public hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets via electronic format on Friday, April 28th, with a second notice provided on Wednesday, May 3rd. Notice the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. We have signed up to testify that Tina Joxson... I know some other people there. Uh, Paris? Avis Paris? Jerry Demian? Do you not testify? Okay. Ms. Joxson? Uh, I think we're starting here. Make sure.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here... First of all, I'm Tina Joxson, and I'm here in support of Bill Number One that allows the government of Guam to do a short-term borrowing to pay tax refunds quicker. My husband and I are both employed and have three young children. Both of our incomes are necessary and allows us a very modest standard of living. We both believe in hard work to keep our families clothed, fed, and properly cared for. We pay our taxes and file our tax returns, and we have a refund coming to us. The proposed bill will help get our refunds sooner, and we support that. When you live on the tight budget as we do, the tax refund helps us tremendously, and if we can get the refunds sooner, that is even better. I humbly ask our senators to pass this bill and our governor to sign it as soon as he gets it. Thank you for letting me express my concern.
Thanks very much, Ms. Joxson. Um, why don't we take you and then...
Hoppity, Senators, as a tax-paying citizen of Guam, I stand in support of the Governor's Bill One. My name is Tina Penala, and I am a resident of Sanohanya. I'm a single mother and primary care provider for my four children. I remember not too long ago when my tax refund checks would take two to three years to be released to me. I also remember in 2011 when I got my big tax refund check that allowed me to take care of a lot of expenses and bills that were piling up. I appreciate that today my tax refund check takes only a couple of months to be released, but it still would be better to get my refund check today. I think it's only fair that checks should be released as soon as possible so I can prepare for the next school year for my children. My kids are in active sports, and their equipment has to be paid no later than August 1st. In addition, I hope to get a vehicle, being a single parent, and getting my children to and from school and school activities. It has been stressful in the past to get this all done, as I have to put off paying bills. As a single mother, it is very important to provide a wholesome life for my children, which becomes tough at times as I am only surviving paycheck to paycheck. I hope our senators will support the Governor's bill and his plans to pay refunds. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Penala. Sure. Good evening, Mr. Speaker. Senators, my name is Adrian Gogwi. I'm from the village of Chalampagu. I spoke at the Governor's Public Hearing two weeks ago. I stated that I was on the fence, and let me clarify what I mean by that, Senators. First of all, I looked at the government of Guam finances. So I went to the government of Guam revenue page, webpage, and looked at previous years, the last report being 2015. So it says basically that the government of Guam total debt obligation is about around $1.1 billion. Our total debt ceiling is $1.4 billion. When I read that report, it says we're about $371 million from our debt ceiling. So that is a concern. I realize I'm in favor of paying tax refunds, but what we need to... The solution needs to be something that's sustainable and not ad hoc, where we're spending and borrowing money. So that's one of my points I want to make. I also asked how was the $75 million derived, because if we're going to be here again next year revisiting the line of credit, if this bill becomes law, is $75 million going to be the amount that pays tax refunds through perpetuity? And the finance team explained the rationale for the $75 million. Okay, so I took it on face value. Some of the concerns I have when I read this bill was that it says that $75 million minus all the other fees incurred with securing the line of credit is what's going to be paid out in tax refunds. So I read that as we're not getting the full $75 million to pay for tax refunds. A percentage of that is going to pay for the fees, the printing costs, et cetera, et cetera, as stated in the bill, on top of the 3% for the first year, the 4% on the second year, and the 5% for the third and final year that this bill is proposing. So those are some of the concerns that I have. As I was reading through the bill, it states that Section 30 funds are going to be put as a lien against the $75 million tran. And I asked the question, who's balancing the checkbook when it comes to Section 30 funds, when it comes in at the end of the fiscal year? Because it already, from my understanding, the Section 30 funds already pays tax refunds. It also pays for government of Guam operations towards the end of the fiscal year, and those same funds are actually hit in the next year's budget. So my question is, who's balancing the checkbook in the Section 30 funds if in fact the law specifically said this bill proposes that a lien would automatically be put against the Section 30 funds? And, you know, at the end of the calendar year, there was great news for the island of the war claims. It's finally going to be paid, but the source of funding is going to be the Section 30 funds again. How much more can we take from the Section 30 funds before we find ourselves that the checkbook is... or the checks are bouncing? That's one concern I have. That's another concern I have. I also stated that if in fact we get the $75 million, this bill becomes law, we get the $75 million minus the fees and minus the interest, what is the guarantee to the people of Guam that these funds are going to be put in a lockbox, not going to become a part of the general fund, and only be used to pay tax refunds? Because I realize the intent may be there, but government of Guam operations are a reality. Nobody wants to go through payless paydays. No one wants to reduce the size of the government of Guam's operation. So those are some of the concerns I put out, is in fact, this is going to be reserved, because I was reading through this thing. It says in the terms and conditions, which are going to be set forth by the Magallah Guahan, I'm just wondering if that's a smokescreen where all of a sudden these funds can be used for other things than to pay tax refunds. So that was another concern I had. Okay, so how does the government generate revenue? I'm not going to give a class on, you know, Revenue 101, but rather than borrowing, 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 what are we going to propose as a solution to generate revenue, to increase the government of Guam revenue potential? So I read the Office of Public Accountability Audit for the GIDA Qualifying Certificate Program, and they had four findings in that audit. So that audit covered a time span, I think, from 2008 through 2012. It had four major findings, and you know, you can read the audit, uh, because I don't know the four findings to commit to memory, but it did state this, that GIDA, who has full flexibility in administering the qualifying certificates, is generous by allowing the maximum terms of the qualifying certificate program, and it underscored the insurance industry. I'm not a finance wizard, sir, but if this is one way we can help increase the revenue for the government of Guam without incurring further debt, then I submit to our elected leaders that they explore this option. Like I said, I'm in favor of paying tax refunds, but at what cost? Do we go into debt further? We are only $371 million away from our debt ceiling, or do we look at other sources for revenue? And I would submit that to the Governor's finance team as well as this body, sir. Okay? So that's my perspective. I'm still on the fence. In the end, I wish the legislature and the governor, the administration, the best for success in determining what's the right solution to pay our tax refunds. Thank you.
I waited all day for your testimony. It's excellent. You got all the points right. Did you get answers when you testified at Adalou two weeks ago?
Yes, sir. As I was pointing out my concerns, the team, I appreciate the team, they were actually stopping me and providing their answers.
And are you satisfied with the answers? Because a lot of the questions that you're asking are really administration.
Well, on the surface, these are nice statements to hear, the reassuring statements. What I don't see is the actual breakout of financial expenditures and the revenues, and let's walk this thing through to see how much the government of Guam can actually afford, how much is actually incurred as debt obligation. I'm afraid that one day our government's going to be insolvent, sir. You know, you look at that report, and it says the government of Guam owns about $14 billion in assets. And once we become insolvent and start selling of these assets, you know, you read the articles in the last several years about Puerto Rico, you know, being in a debt crisis. We don't want to be in that situation, sir. Again, everyone agrees that we need to pay tax refunds, but what is sustainable without incurring further debt and increase our revenue collection potential? And I pointed out, at least the qualifying certificate may be one area that they look at. Of course, you know, you can always increase taxes, but that's never popular with the people. You want to reduce the government of Guam operations? That means either reducing pay or laying folks off. No one wants to go down that road. So these are the hard questions that, you know, the legislature already knows. It's... Paying tax refunds is not an easy solution. It's a very complicated process because you go into further debt, or do you look at your revenue collection options? Or maybe there's a balance, there's a medium where we can accommodate both. But those are my concerns, and that's the reason why I'm on the fence.
Thank you very much. I really can't answer your first two questions, but I'm hoping that we can find a long-term solution. A number of people, a number of my colleagues have asked that question. We need to find a long-term solution. As to what the guarantee is to pay into the lockbox, we can keep passing legislation. Senator Mike here has been pushing on the idea, on the statutory requirement to put money into the trust fund, to no avail. And so I... That is a very good question that you've raised, and we'll have to deal with that one. I don't know if anybody else has a comment or a question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Gogwi, and ladies, thank you for your testimony this evening. You know, Mr. Gogwi, I'm glad you mentioned about looking forward and trying to find a long-term fix, because I think it's time for our government to really step up and right-size this government. In terms of right-sizing, doesn't necessarily mean downsizing. It doesn't necessarily mean terminating employees. What it could result in is reassigning, identifying exactly what the critical services that this government can afford moving forward, looking at personnel, allowing for cross-training of personnel, and making sure that we transfer or reassign these individuals within the government structure. So rather than initially, at least upfront, with the exception of professional certified personnel, when I say professional degree personnel that are required for certain jobs, certainly we can look at our GovGuam public family employees and allow them to be able to transfer to another agency so that we don't have to recruit for that agency. I'll give you an excellent example. Every budget cycle year, Rev and Tax always ask for additional personnel so that they can expedite the processing of some of these tax refund forms. We could possibly look at some agencies within the government structure and say, okay, these are our services and functions that we could, at this point in time, do without, see if these employees can be reassigned and transferred to Rev and Tax so that they can provide that additional support. Because that's what this government really needs to step into now, the mindset that in fact we need to right-size this government, we need to look for areas where in fact there's redundancies of functions, and we can reduce those redundancies, but not at the expense of terminating employees. And that's why I said, reassigning, transferring personnel, right-sizing this government, we can certainly do this in terms of making sure that we have a calculated approach to doing this. But it's got to originate really with the executive branch and this legislative branch recognizing that the time is right, the time has come where we have to commit to doing this and doing it now, so that in the future, we do not necessarily have to go out and borrow money, whether you want to call it refer to the line of credit, or you want to refer to it as a short-term loan. We don't necessarily have to go out to borrow a line of credit for operational purposes within a fiscal year, and guess what? We can pay our tax refunds on time, within the two weeks, within 30 days, set that as a standard so that our people continue to expect that. We can pay our obligations on our business vendors out there on time, and then any additional excess that is realized is cost savings, whether we grow the revenues, or grow the economy, or we reduce costs, whatever additional cost savings, we can reinvest it into our infrastructure here in our community. So I really appreciate the perspective that you shared today, because really, that's the mindset, and that's what the executive branch and the legislative branch, we have to move forward with. And I wanted to inquire with the administrative personnel, but I have to step away for a couple of meetings. But this is where perhaps, in providing this authorization, we require that we start looking at right-sizing this government, and we start looking at right-sizing it the right way in terms of looking at agencies. You have a director right behind you who every now and then requests for additional personnel and support over our public health, and that certainly could be a good start. So if we move in this direction, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Speaker, I know that I brought up a sideline issue, but it's something that was brought up also, not only during the discussion, the conversation with the senators here and representatives of the administration in terms of finding a long-term fix, but really, we do this, it's not a one-year process, it's not a two-year process, it's an extended process, and it certainly would result in what we want to realize, and that is a more efficient government, a reduction in redundancies, and allow for our personnel to be able to work in areas where the need is critical within the government, whether it's public safety, healthcare, or education, or the other areas. So I wanted to share that particular comment, so I appreciate your statement, Mr. Gogwi. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies, I very much appreciated your testimony. I know that coming in public and sharing challenges that we face is never easy. And, you know, when I first got inspired to run for office, it was because of the last time we went through this. I was a financial advisor at Bank of Guam, and I really enjoyed it. I really enjoyed being able to generate a return for my clients. It's just very rewarding for me. And I noticed that we are going out and taking these huge bonds out to catch up for years and years and years of not paying out tax refunds. And while I understood the obligation, I also understood that you can't borrow your way out of a spending problem. And the reason why I got motivated to run for office those many years ago, feels like yesterday, but it's been a while. The reason why was because unless the habits changed, I knew we'd be right here, right now, talking about more borrowing for the same purpose. And earlier, just a couple hours ago, in the conversations we were having with the Governor's fiscal team, we still weren't able to get a commitment from the people at the table as to how exactly we were going to change the circumstances. And sir, you are correct, we need a sustainable solution. And sometimes we consider the idea of raising revenue, but then you have, of course, and rightfully so, individuals in our community who are like, well, you're not handling the revenue you have now responsibly. You know, you're not paying into the refund account, you're giving out raises, you're saying that we have a surplus, you're saying you have all this money and you fix the finances, and so you're able to, you know, give yourselves more and give yourselves retros. So why are we going to raise revenue when you're obviously spending as if everything's fine? So it's going to take a community effort, and it's going to take a leadership effort for us to reconcile several things. The first thing is we cannot borrow our way out of a spending problem. We couldn't do it those many years ago, and we're not going to do it today. The second thing is before we can really get the trust of the community that we're going to grow revenue and spend it wisely, we need to demonstrate first that we are being honest about our financial position and that we are spending the money that we really do have in the really best way, and we have not earned the public's trust in that, at least I don't think so. I think that's one of the reasons why there's been some of the political results that we've had in recent elections. And those kind of problems just further compound, not just with pay raises, but with our inability to get something like Simon Sanchez fixed after so many years. I mean, there are just so many examples of our inability to demonstrate and earn the trust of our community that we're going to manage their money well. And so absent that trust, they're not going to trust us to raise revenue. They think that if we raise taxes, if we do anything that's going to increase a cost to them, whether it's directly through taxation or passed through by taxing an entity that's going to pass the charges down to them, I think our people are just very tired of And so the question becomes, how do we fix this? And it really just starts with us stopping the hard sell and really sitting down as leaders of one community in one unified government and putting the money where it's supposed to go and building that trust, putting those deposits into the account. Since 2014, our budget has gone up, and we still haven't set aside the money necessary. And then we have our people coming before us and saying, you know, hey, we need our money, it's our money, and they're absolutely right, it is their money, why didn't we handle it properly? So the one silver lining that I see to this entire tran exercise is that it's brought a tremendous awareness to our people that I think was not as pronounced as it was before. Our people really realize, do we keep borrowing like this, or do we really start spending wisely? That, I think, has become front and center. And I think that the second really positive thing is our folks who need the funds, I remember years ago, they were begging on the table saying, oh, I want my money at any cost. Now the narrative has very much changed. People say, this is our money, we deserve it, but I'm on the fence. I'm concerned about how we go about getting it. So I really think that the community mindset has shifted. I think that the public is in a place where they can understand that we need to get our act together and do things better. I think now the onus is up to us, and what action are we going to take? And are we going to do this all over again? Or are we going to do it differently? And part of doing it differently, and we're all going to have to be aware of that, is our budget next year isn't going to be able to have all of the shillings that, you know, are politically popular. But if we can put the money where it's supposed to go and actually fix the problem, earn the trust of our community... the trust of our community, I think that that will be the most politically popular thing to do. So I thank all of you for your testimony here today. I think that it provides a very clear blend of what our people are expecting of us and it gives us something very serious to consider as we consider this proposal in the greater context of our overall budget, our overall behavior, and how we conduct ourselves as leaders. So thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you all for your testimony and Mr. Gouwe, thank you for participating in that hearing, that I was there. And I appreciate the same line of questions you brought forth with the fiscal team and I think they did their best to address their concerns. It's interesting, you brought up Gov Guam debt and in the previous hearings, I was talking about, you know, many of our colleagues are talking about permanent solutions to this issue, these specific to tax refunds. And when you brought up the overall amount at over a billion dollars, it's interesting just looking at the Compact Impact Report amounting in the past thirteen years over a billion dollars as well owed for addressing the impacts of Compact. Now, at least in the past five years, the impact, Compact impact, has escalated from one hundred twenty-five million to at least around one hundred seventy million dollars. So yes, we could talk about generating revenues, can generate fifty million dollars in new revenues, but we have a dark cloud that's escalating at a far, a greater amount than what we can generate. And I bring this up for the record, so hopefully that this body and working with our congresswomen has been mentioned in the past, that we have to look at these unfunded federal mandates that are eating away at our financial resources, our resources in general. And we are challenged by that. Yes, we can see your budgets growing and certainly, but I know what's hidden in that or integrated into that is overall impact. So, earlier the director mentioned that if we were to restructure or find solutions to these unfunded federal mandates, certainly, I mean, keep in mind, this is none of our doing, but we're obligated to address it, we'll certainly be in a better financial position. We are addressing things that are not out of our doing, but this body and working with the administrations are trying to as we go. But I agree with you and I'm seeing how we're trying to find all these solutions, permanent solutions, but what could be permanent when you have an associated cost that you have no control off, that's escalating far more greater than what we're doing to generate revenue? Fifty million dollars in the past year. No, no, what sure industry we can tap to make that a wash? So I appreciate your concerns, that's something we certainly have to look at, it's escalating at a rate that we need our Congress to start talking about and certainly how we can restructure that. I know we are getting reimbursed at an amount of about fifteen, sixteen million dollars, but that's a drop in the bucket to what these mandates, or what the federal government owes to us. But I certainly look at this trans and this financial tool and just want to be very clear that we've been here all day, addressing the same concerns that you all have been bringing up as well. So I thank you all for your testimony.
Thank you very much for your testimony, I have a few more people, your excuse, thank you very much. Mrs. Silverio, Mr. Uggan, and Mrs. Snagasteen, anybody else besides these three? Anybody else besides these three?
Please, just turn on the mic and testify.
Okay. Test. Test.
Hi, Tess. Hi, Hafadi, Senator, as a speaker. My name is Al Silverio and I work for the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services and I'm here because I am in support of Bill 1 S. I haven't always been. I fully understand, at least on a layman's level, what's going on with this bond proposal and I learn something new every day. I learned a lot this afternoon. There's a lot of people who are not in this room today. As we sit here, I know of two government of Guam employees who are packing up their vehicles because they don't have a place to stay. And I know about fiscal responsibility, being a fifty-six-year-old man myself, managing my family's finances, and also my grant programs on public health, which I manage as well. So I know about fiscal responsibility and making sure that things are spent wisely and according to plan and also to generate enough funds within our households to survive. But I believe that a different responsibility, a social responsibility, is also within all of us in this room for people who cannot be here because of the situations that are beyond their control. And I know that we need to have a fiscal, responsible, solid foundation. I worry about my retirement, I worry about my mom who's eighty-three years old, if she'll have her retirement, I worry about my children and my grandchildren as well, what kind of island are we going to leave for them, what is our legacy after our terms end in the legislature and I retire and move on? But I cannot help ignore the fact that our island is dying and to a degree we are letting that happen. I could not think of moving out of my house tonight and living in an old vehicle by the side of the road next to the beach. That's beneath the dignity of what this island deserves. We struggled through so many things, so many wars, typhoons, and financial emergencies that this should not be one of them. I believe that with this bond, people can make it to tomorrow. We plan for the next three or four years, how are we going to pay this money back? These people cannot see past Saturday and they are so embarrassed and unwilling and unable to come here and articulate that with us. That's why I'm here, because I see them and I feel them. And yes, as an aging old man, I feel sorry for them because I will go home to my home with my mother, I have a place to stay, but these people have no money, they are behind in their rent through no fault of their own, they have no food, some of them go through the newspaper and look at their obituaries and find out when the matay is the last day so they will go to eat. Why do we resort to having to look for dead people's celebrations to feed our children? They don't know who the families are, but that's where they go to eat, it's been whittled down to that. And I understand, I understand, I am also due for a refund, but it's terrible a test, I did not even turn in my refund until eleven fifty-five, April seventeen. I can wait for my refund, I can, I don't need it right away, but outside these walls, people depend on it as their livelihood and you've heard that many times already, but I cannot emphasize that any more emphatically than today, that they don't know about the bond, they don't care about the issues and the three-year payment and the interest rates and the fees that have to be paid, they don't know anything about what a debt ceiling is, have no concept of that, they only have the concept of being alive tomorrow. And I do not want to live out of an SUV that's twenty years old with a two-week-old baby because my government did not cooperate with me and I know tomorrow is uncertain. I love the dark clouds analogy, Senator, I feel it, I see it, I worry about it, but this is not about tomorrow as much as the people want us to believe, it's about today. I got paid today, I have a vehicle, but these people who are our relatives, our sisters and brothers on this island that have knots, don't even come here because they can't. And I'm here to express for them, to appeal to you, despite all of the things and challenges that you hear about this bond, and at first I did not agree with it, but in time I learned I thought, yes, this is good, someone can get their rent money, someone can pay for their food and registration, not worry about the police pulling them over because a car's two-years registration overdue. That is not what this island is about, we take care of each other, we do not have an orphanage here, we do not have an old folks home on Guam because we take care of each other, it should not be any different with our government. And it costs money, yes. I live in a family that did not have everything all the time and we had to go beyond our means and we had to cover and pay the consequences later, but was it worth it? Absolutely, I'm here, right, I'm contributing, I learned from those lessons, we were poor, we paid our debts. And there's no reason why the government of Guam cannot either. I think people have the faith that that will happen, it may not be so apparent to us now, but I know, I know things can get better, I'm not going to be your eternal optimist and promise you that everyone's going to vote for you back into office and you're going to have great careers and everything will be fine because it's not going to be, but if we send some good, positive signals back to those people who are waiting to hear from you and say, you have your tax refund this time, that's going to be okay, you're going to be fine. I think the morale and dignity of this island would go so far beyond what we can imagine just with this simple, though expensive, seventy-five-million-dollar bond, the people can breathe, you won't have to meet people at the intersection with a sign saying medical expenses and having to suffer the indignities of asking someone for money while you're at McDonald's. I don't like it and I don't think any of you senators and people in this room like that either. We have a fantastic island, I am one-hundred percent Filipino, but I choose to live here. I love the people that's working here, I love working here for public health. And if I can just leave this one final thought with you here, is that we get what we settle for, everything we wear, our finances, this building, how you look like, that's what we settle for today. We can truly aspire to do better for our people, but we have to settle for more and not less. So I am in support of Bill 1 S and I hope that you consider it in your hearts and your minds and souls to please make that a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silverio. Mr. Uggan.
Hafadi, I'm Terry Uggan, I too work with Department of Public Health and Social Services and I will say, one in honor actually it is to be here today. And as Mr. Silverio pointed out, there are so many, many families and children that are not here today. And whether they sit by their homeside or even the rosary stands in their house and pray on how to figure out how we're going to feed three or four or five-plus kids and how we're going to either pay for the water or the power this month in hopes that neither one are disconnected, is an ongoing process. And I know we're trying to build the trust of the people of Guam, but I'm all about making good, solid decisions and that trust will follow. Many of these people look to the policymakers that are in this room today to look out for their well-being, their health as well. And although they prefer probably not to, the truth of the matter is, is so many are living from payday to payday, from week to week, from day to day, sometimes from moment to moment. Especially, I've had the opportunity to be in people's homes, whether it's from newborn to senior citizen and, you know, many of them have too often, small fans connected to car batteries, just to sort of keep themselves cool so they don't get bed sores, now this is their reality, this is their reality. And let's think about the obligation of the government and the people and the burdens that we're putting on perhaps future generations. But clearly, there's not going to be very much future generation if we don't get our act together this time. And that tax return for so many families is the deciding factor as to whether what the food is going to look like on the table or if there's even going to be food on the table. So, yes, I am in favor of the bill. I must admit, when I thought about tax hikes, it's the last thing that I think any of us want to have here at the table. But I also looked at for a moment, government spending, and I must admit, there needs to be a better balance between the two. As I look at each one of your faces here today and I think to myself, these are the people that are representing not only me, but they're representing the sixty-nine, seventy-nine, eighty-nine-year-old amputee or bedridden woman or man, or the two-week-old child that's up at neonatal unit up at GMH. And I think to myself, how grounded, how in touch of reality is this group of people before me today? Now I know a lot of the senators are new and I'll be honest with you, that's a favorable, fresh, and maybe even committed group of people that we look forward to working with. But we have a history of those people who have been in this legislature for a while and it should never come to a panel coming to you to talk about whether people should get their taxes or whether we should be talking about a bond or borrowing just to pay them. These people, yes, they're entitled to it, not only they're entitled to it, but they're entitled to a timely return. Now if the government has made some spury decisions along the way, then I suggest we clean that up, but let's don't forget why we're really here today and the big impact that even a small amount of money that these families will be getting back in the scheme of things will make a difference in their lives. So yes, I am in favor of the bill. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Uggan. Anybody have any comment, a question? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Snagasteen.
Mr. Speaker, senators, good evening and thank you for your time. I am a cabinet member of this administration, but this evening I'm here to speak on behalf as a ordinary citizen from the village of Dedido. This issue, we are not being able to pay taxes back to the folks that rightfully owe their taxes, is nothing new. This has been a long time a problem. So why hasn't there been a solution? Why hasn't there been a solution? I joined the military in nineteen seventy-nine, I do make occasional visits back home to Guam every year, every two years, or every year when there's a typhoon, just to help my family recover. The painful part about it is after serving thirty years, a person that served his country with such honors, why is it that we continue to experience these problems where I engage with my aunt, a stranger in the street, an elderly, someone older than me? And this is true facts, and you all could swim in this evening if you want to, because it's still happening out there as we speak and as we discuss this bill. The elderly lady, an aunt of mine, a stranger of mine, that will vent and say, son, I'm waiting for my tax so that I could buy food, so that I could get my medication, and there's more than that. I did not have an opportunity to sit in the hearing this morning at ten and at two o'clock. I don't know how many people showed up to testify, I don't know how many residents from Guam showed up, but if this is what we're seeing, this is very poor showing in comparison to what the population of Guam is. And I want to say this, because I concur with the gentleman to my left, that many of them are inconvenient to be able to come out here and represent themselves, many of them. Many of them, and I heard it up here, understand that we cannot go into any more depth. That's not really the facts to it. Many of them just got fed up. Many of them, and they're not here, were not calm because they know that that's it. Their hope for many years has gone because this has been a continuous problem. I do have a sister-in-law that actually told my wife, uh, we'll just wait, you'll get here. But the problem with it is they continue to accumulate debt, and it became acceptable because what can they do? What can they do even if they came here and said, please, I support this strand bill, pay me my taxes? But it's not going to happen anyways. And it is very painful. When I leave to go back to my duty station and and this gentleman was talking, and here I am sitting down and even, and that's why I apologize that I have to raise my voice, otherwise I'll break down and cry just knowing that there was nothing that I could do to help these people back then that needed the help, because we weren't able to do our jobs to help them. It became acceptable that they ain't going to get their taxes, so you're going to have to starve. It became acceptable that they ain't going to get their taxes, so there's more, no money for their medication. You know what's very painful? Is they relied on that medication, they relied on that money for their medical needs. And I know for a fact that many of them has gone because it wasn't there. So like the gentleman here to my left said, they don't care about debt ceilings. I'm not a good mathematician, not like Mr. Gouwea, and I'm going to take some classes with him later on, but what I want to convey is the majority of the people that needs these money, that needs the refund, do not know that, do not care, but we should care. We should, because that's why we were appointed, and that's why we were voted to be placed in this position, so that we do not continue to endure what we have experienced back in the eighties all the way into the nineties. And this is almost every year that I come home, and this is facts. I do have a family member that was working at Guam Revenue and Tax that told me, man, Joey, it's so hard because the old lady will come and beg and beg to please release their taxes, but I couldn't because we got to get authorization. And all they needed it for was for the medication. That's painful. I'm a Marine, and I'll cry. It puts me to tears. Why should we do that? So what I want to say here is it don't matter what you all plan to do. If you all have a better solution than One S, then put it on the table. If you have a better solution than One S, then put it out there and let's take care of the people like we promised to do so. Senators, I'm I'm telling you, and many of you all that are probably the boomer generation like I am, it it's painful. And really, to see an individual in tears, you know for a fact they need it. For me, if you ask me, the only problem I have is I'm not a millionaire and I'm not a billionaire. But if I have to spend a billion dollars to save my mom, if I have to save a billion dollars to save an individual from their death, I think it's worth it. It's up to us later on to figure out how to recover that billion dollars, but that one life means more than that billion dollars to me. We talk about rightsizing, and I like the idea, I respect it. We talk about the economy. I'll tell you what, when I left this place in eighty, the economy was growing. I came back in the mid-eighty, into the ninety, it started going down. I came back retired fully in two thousand and ninety. The economy here in Guam, I might be, I might be mistaken, but it it boomed. So what's happening? What what are we missing? I understand the rightsizing. I agree, but when the population and a lot of activities, more activities are happening on the island, something's got to give. You've got to be able to increase and improve that services, and it doesn't mean cutting the services. It means finding ways to improve it, bettering the services. And you all might not agree with me, but gentlemen, ladies, senators, and everyone that's in here, Guam has grown. So where's the revenue, where's the revenue at? So in conclusion, I agree with this strand bill. I agree with Bill One S. Senators, please, not for me, it's for those out, people out there that need the help, it's for those kids and the future generation, that we should work hard and find a better solution so that this thing doesn't continue. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Snagastine. Any questions or comments? Are there any other individuals who wish to testify? If not, we adjourned.